We're going over some important information, so I apologize in advance for that. It's a call to order and everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, roll call.
Mrs. Dr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
Here.
Mrs. Rossler?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Wiznewski?
Here.
Mr. Zuko?
Here.
All members in attendance.
The Board met an executive session on April 24th, 2018 to discuss matters of litigation, personnel, real estate, and contract negotiations. Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed.
You make that motion?
Second.
So motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Alright, up next is student recognition features.
We're gonna change the process for how we do this, so I'm going to ask all the board members to come out front, get out of their chairs, so we can shake hands with all these fabulous kids that did some fabulous things.
Good. Mrs. Rossler. Disco, right around, semi sir.
Just shake hands with everybody, so you can say hi to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Highland. I'd like to invite up Coach Jerry Yushinsky. He's our bowling coach.
Thank you, Coach Yushinsky.
We understand that the team had some great accomplishments this year, individual and team-wise, so we would like to present, along with your help, some awards for some of the outstanding bowlers and congratulate the teams as well for a great season. So we'll let you go ahead and get started and introduce some of our fantastic bowlers in Plum.
Okay, do you just want me to read?
Yeah, we have the names all ready.
Okay, so the first one's Nicole Abrams, East Section Champ, PA State finalist.
She's not here.
Is it okay if I just skip to the ones who I know are here tonight?
Sure, if you have anything special to say about them in particular.
Okay, well, I actually brought a little bit. Can I read this afterwards?
Sure, you want to do that first, that's fine.
Okay, I'll do it first. Sorry, I was used to the old format. You guys threw me for a loop tonight. So first of all, I want to thank the Board for having us tonight. It's always a great honor to be here and to be recognized. I would like to thank Mr. Alpino for all the support that he gives us throughout the year. Without him, things wouldn't be as smooth as they are. Rich Nesbit of Nesbit Slains, without their help throughout the year and everything that they do, not just for our team but this community, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. I would also like to thank my assistants, ones in attendance tonight, that's Darryl Pelick. He coaches the girls' team, and let me tell you, he does a fantastic job and I really appreciate his help. The other, he's not here tonight, my brother Dan Yushinsky, he primarily helps us in the postseason. Last but definitely not least, the most important thing is the kids. They make it special to come here every single year and to see their achievements and how they succeed from freshman to seniors is absolutely fantastic, so we appreciate them a lot as well. So, I'm gonna read for the boys and girls, because unfortunately, my girls' coach, he's kind of a cripple tonight, so we're gonna, we're gonna help him out. Starting off with the boys, they had a great regular season, so proud of them. They went nine and one throughout the season. We reclaimed the section title this year. Last year, we lost it to Franklin Regional. This year, we beat them Week Five, which was a huge night for us. We had a fantastic day. We shot what has been my high, well, their high series, bowling for me, and that was a 32-27, and I know that doesn't mean anything to you guys, but basically, that's averaging a 210 a person per game, so it's absolutely fantastic bowling. Another big feat was in Week Seven. As far as I have records of, it was the highest single game that our team has shot with an 1175. Once again, translating into terms, that means a 235 average per person for that game. So absolutely fantastic bowling. Going into postseason, we sent five individuals to the WPIBL tournament. We also sent our team there. All five of our individuals qualified for the regional event, and our team qualified as well. During the regional event, we had some struggles, but the one very bright spot was our sophomore, Vince Coco. He finished fifth at the regional event, and that qualified him for states. And he actually led the tournament most of the day. And you had to come in the top 12 to qualify, to get to states, and that's what he did. So, a really good job by Vince, we're very proud of him. Now, switching to the girls' side, they too had a great regular season. They went 10-0, and they went undefeated despite losing two seniors last year who were key parts of our team. We sent three girls to the WPIBL event, and we also sent the team to the WPIBL event as well. There at the regional event, we had a lot of success on the girls' side. Shannon Small, who's also a sophomore, she actually won that tournament. So she came in first place out of 74 girls, I think it was. So she did, I'm sorry, what was that?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four girls. And the team got third place, and that qualified them for states. You had to be in the top six to get to states. Couple other key notes I would like to point out on the boys' side. One thing that happened that was absolutely fantastic this year was Franklin McCurial, who was our senior and captain. He was the Section East MVP, and not only is this a hard, hard award to win one time, but he won it four years, all four years of his high school career, he won Section MVP. So Franklin did a fantastic job. Also, just to go back a little bit, the team had won, has been the Section Champ seven out of the last eight years. So it's year after year after year, these guys keep going, and they want to get better and better. And during that span, they're 74 and six, so they don't, they don't lose too often. On the girls' side, this is even more miraculous, honestly, I can't believe it, and even though I was there for it, it's just an awesome thing. First of all, on an individual side, Megan Christman, she was the Section East MVP. So we, we actually had the boy and girl MVP in our section and on our team. So, good job, Megan. Now, this is where it gets really crazy. Over the last five years, our girls have won the section title. They've won, now, we bowl 10 matches a year, they won 54 straight matches. They haven't lost. The last time they lost was on January 16th, 2013, against Penn Hills. So absolutely a great bowling. And then I went one more step further with it, which is we bowl three games per match. And in that span of 54 matches that they won, their record is 158 wins, three losses, and one tie, so. And now, if you don't mind, I'll continue with this. So, next we have Josh Cheeks, East Section Champ. Next we have Megan Christman, East Section Champ, East Section MVP, and PA Team State finalist. We have Ellen Sorelli, East Section Champ. Vincent Coco, East State, East Section Champ, and PA State finalist. Ty Kirkpatrick, East Section Champ. Franklin McCurial, East Section Champ, and East Section MVP. And that's everybody.
Congratulations.
Let me add one tradition too. Are the seniors there, they're raising their hand?
Yes.
Seniors, if you could tell us where you're going next year, or what you're gonna do when you, when you move on from Plum?
CCAC for two years, to get base credits out, so I don't have to pay as much.
I'm Dr. St. Vincent College, and I'll be doing athletics later. And hopefully, I won't get on to a mess with.
I will be attending the Pittsburgh Institute of Paragons.
Mr. Wiznewski is going to present the ice hockey team. Coach Soma here?
Come on up, Coach Soma.
Perfect.
Come on up.
You sure you don't want to talk?
No, come on up.
Just wanted to make sure I got his names correctly. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Adamski.
I think I got it.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you to the Board. I want to say a few things. First off, the Board, I don't think you guys know how, uh, thank you. The Board, I don't think you guys know how important you are for Plum hockey. It is by far the most expensive sport that there will ever be, and without the Board's help, and without the, the financial help from you, there wouldn't be a hockey team. So I appreciate, the entire hockey community appreciates everything, because it just wouldn't exist without you guys. I want to thank you to my assistant coaches who aren't here, they're some of my best friends. Board member, Board President, Don Boriello, thank you for everything that you've done throughout the past however many years you've been here. And just to the kids, the greatest part about being a coach, as everybody knows who's been a coach, is that seeing them smile while they play their sport is the greatest thing of all time, and it just makes you, eh, it just makes you happy. These kids, there's four kids here tonight, and we're here to celebrate them for being an All-Star. They made the All-Star team, and our whole team is a great team, and to become an All-Star, it's hard. As you guys know, it's, it's, it's hard. You have to be very talented, but you also have to be committed to perfecting your craft. You have to be, you have to be there at practice, putting in the effort when nobody else is, and these four guys are the, the epitome of that. Our team got bumped up into the top tier this year. We got bumped up into AAA, which is the highest PIHL bracket for hockey. This was after a year where we lost 12 seniors, and a lot of people cave in a situation like that. As a coaching staff, we kind of talked before the year and weren't sure how this year would go. I'm an optimist, but I'm also a realist, and these boys just proved us all wrong. We played terrific hockey, and that has a lot to do with our four, our four All-Stars that are here tonight. And, mind you, we had one, one player who was not an All-Star. He made the Penguins Cup, or no.
Team Pittsburgh.
There we go, that's why we keep him around. Team Pittsburgh, which is the best players throughout Pittsburgh, play on a travel team, and this team, Pittsburgh, happened to win Nationals, and our goalie, Sergio Benitez, was the, was the starting goalie for that team. They went 6-0 on their, on their win for that. To get back to these four kids who are here tonight, we're gonna start with the two seniors. Number one, Dominic Boriello.
Where are you? You want to tell everybody where you're going?
Yeah, I'm listening in the United States Army.
Dominic, very proud of you. Next up is Senior Colin Patton. And next up was the only freshman who made the All-Star team, Joseph Costa. Three more. Once again, thank you to the Board, thank you to Dom, thank you to the kids for everything, and above all else, just make sure you guys continue to work hard, show respect, and good things happen. Thank you, guys, and you guys have a great evening.
Fantastic. Something come up? We have some wrestlers, wrestlers we need to recognize. Thanks for coming, Coach.
Thanks. First off, I'd like to thank the Board for taking the time out to recognize our student athletes and all the hard work and dedication that they put in during the season. Winner's sports is very difficult, especially when you're a wrestler, because we're wrestling through Thanksgiving and Christmas, and you know what? We gotta make weight a couple days later, so while everybody else is eating, you know, these guys are looking at the food and, you know, thinking about how bad they're gonna win, and so they can eat later. You know, these guys that are up here right now are, you know, they're, they're excellent athletes, and they did a great job this year. We have three guys who won All-County honors this year. The Allegheny County Tournament is a rather large tournament, and the wrestling there, they're competing in a bracket with state champions, state place winners, and, you know, the whole team went out there and, you know, went hard and, and went after it, but we have three guys here who were, you know, at the end, were on the podium and got All-County honors. So we got Talon Off, who's All-County. Talon's a junior, so he'll be back next year. We have Gavin James, also All-County. Gavin's a sophomore, this is the second time that he's been All-County. And Cole Yaca. Cole's also a sophomore, gaining All-County honors this year. Okay, and the last guy I got here, for those of you who don't know a lot about wrestling, the WPIAL is one of the toughest areas in the country to wrestle, okay? Out of the 10 Division One National Champions, three of them are from the Whipple this year in college. So this is an area where the competition level that these guys, you know, go out and face every week is the highest in the country, and to, you know, succeed at that is, is very difficult, takes a lot of dedication, it takes, you know, the will to walk into that room and improve every day. You know, Colin Stessic here is a junior, and he qualified for the Whipple Tournament, one of the toughest brackets, weight classes in the state, did a great job this year, good Once again, thank you, guys, for taking the time to recognize the hard work that these young men put in, and go Mustangs.
You don't have to sit here for the meeting. You don't want to.
Yeah, sneak out. Sneak out while you can.
Time for homework.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I guess the only thing I'd add here is why I'm doing my report first. Before the ballot? Or just the agenda? Okay, what about the non-agenda? Okay, that's right. Yeah.
Um, this one minor change that we're gonna have in our meeting, we're gonna have the citizens' comments on the agenda items, but then we're gonna have the President's Report and the Superintendent's Report, followed by the rest of the agenda, and then we'll have the citizens' comments on non-agenda items at the end, so that's the only difference. Everything else will be the same. So can I have any citizens' comments on agenda items, please?
Okay. President's Report?
Okay, alright, I'll start with the President's Report. Tonight is Dr. Brendan Highland's first official voting meeting as the new Superintendent of Plum Borough School District. As we move forward, I am confident and have full trust in his ability to lead this district in the right direction, including with the education of our students. He's already been developing positive relationships with the staff, students, parents, and Board members. Following the school board's Building Team Unity meeting with Dr. DeSantis earlier this month, we are ready to move forward and continue to make some very difficult decisions, including with the financial operations of the school district. As we slowly change the culture and climate of the district for the better, it is my hope that we can collectively become more unified, including as a community, which will help shine the district in a better light to everyone viewing us from the outside. And then this will allow us to educate our students in a, you know, in a safe nurturing environment. Alright, and then next is the Superintendent Report.
Mr. Schlock, thank you very much. I would like to first thank everybody. The people that have, that I have met and have come across through my month here at Plum, it has been absolutely fantastic. I've had so many people reach out to me, welcome me, and just make me feel as though I'm part of the team, and so I thank everyone that has been so nice and so gracious during this time, especially during this first month, which is, is a transition, there's no doubt about it. In particular, I'd like to thank Dr. Yedminsky for the hard work that she has done in the time that she took over as Acting Superintendent. I can tell you, from my perspective, she has been a godsend for me as I, as I transition. So Gail, I'd like to personally thank you for everything you've done to help me adjust the district. We do have a lot of work to do, there's no question about it. We have some very difficult decisions that are ahead of us. I knew that when I took this job, that there were going to be difficult decisions, but one of the things that the Board asked me to do when I came in is to try and make this school district the greatest possible school district that we can, and I intend to do that with the help of the Team of Ten around this, around this, this bench here, and including my central administration, the building principals, and the teachers. We all have to work together, along with our support staff, to try and make this the best place possible, and I do believe there is a, there is an awful lot of potential. One of the things that I said when I came to Plum, I think this place is a goldmine, and I think the people in Plum have to recognize how good they are. In, in my travels throughout the district, what I've found is, there are so many positive things that are happening, and for some reason, they just don't get out as much as they need to, and we're gonna work on that, and we're gonna continue to be positive, we're gonna continue to build bridges, and we're gonna continue to work with the community to try and shine a positive light on this district, because it is well-deserved. So, some things that we have started, we started our Team of Ten Retreat with the Board members, and obviously, we have some more veteran Board members, and we have some newer Board members, and have a new Superintendent, and so we're working together to try and be a Team of Ten. We certainly can't do this by ourselves, and if we don't work collectively, we're going to have, you know, we're not gonna do the, the students' work. And so, we had our first session with Dr. DeSantis. There's a potential we may have some more sessions. He laid the found work, the foundation, I think, for some positive work ahead, and hopefully we can continue on that. One of the things that we're going to reinstitute as we move forward, you know, 70% of those folks who live in Plum don't necessarily have kids in schools, and a larger segment of that community is some of our, our senior citizens. And one of the things I think we should do is reach out to them, and what I'd like to do is fill our auditoriums, and fill our gymnasiums, and fill our fields, so that some of those who have already had kids go through school can come back and support our kids. And so we are reinstituting what we're referring to as the Golden Mustang Card, and so that is a card with, Mrs. Caldwell kind of helped me out on that and pushed me along on that, and thought it was a fantastic idea that we reach out to the senior citizens and invite them to be part of our school community, and let them see all the wonderful things that are happening. Let them come and see the Annie production that happened last week. Had the opportunity to see that, and it was absolutely fantastic. So if you didn't get an opportunity to get out and see that play, shame on you, because you missed some really talented kids. So anyhow, the Golden Mustang Card, we want our senior citizens to come out and see all the positive things that are happening. So we're going to not only have the, the senior citizens, senior citizens come to the administrative offices, but I'm also gonna work with Mr. Stevens to work out, to go to some of the senior citizen facilities in the district, so that we can go to them and be a service of them. So I appreciate Mr. Stevens' work in trying to make that happen. The last thing I want to talk about, and I'll be brief on it, I have had the opportunity to meet with every single faculty in the district. In fact, I've met with them two times. The first time, when I met with the faculty, I asked them three questions. I asked them to tell me what do they love about Plum, this district, what is great, what makes you proud about this district? I asked them the second question, what don't they like about Plum? What do we need to change? And the third question is, what advice would they give the new guy? And they had some advice. There's no question about that. But one of the things that struck me was that they, the, the folks that I spoke to felt as though they didn't have an input into the processes that were going on within the district. And so, we're trying very hard to try and give those educators a voice, because they're, they're the ground, they're on the ground, they're the ground troops. Sometimes, we at the Board and at the central administrative level, we're at the, I always refer to it, Board is at the 30,000-foot level, that's where they should be, and I should be a little lower, and the building principal should be a little lower, but those teachers and students are on the ground, and they do, they do the hard work every day. And so I wanted to reach out to them and find out, give them some input. So, I went around again, and we shared with them the difficult decisions that we have moving forward with the budget. And there are some very difficult decisions, and I'm, I'm gonna tell it like it is, guy. I'm a straight shooter, and that's what I told those members of the faculty, and I'm asking them for their advice. And so we are forming an ad hoc budget committee of educators, so that they can share what they believe are, you know, what are some best practices to move forward, so that maybe we can look at some ways of obtaining- to move forward, so that maybe we can look at some, um, ways of obtaining revenue or cutting expenditures. Because either way you look at it, you need revenue, or you need to cut expenditures. And so we wanna reach out to those ground troops and see if we can, um, get something done. And, uh, so that pretty much concludes my report. Again, I just wanna thank everybody for the warm welcome. I really look forward to getting to know more and more people, and I really look forward to making this. Um, it's a great district. I wanna make it even better. With your help, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Highland.
Thanks, Dr. Holland. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kohler, Chairperson, recommend approval of Resolution 2018, on 2018 dash four dash 24 dash three to eliminate the position of Assistant Superintendent effective upon employment of the Assistant Superintendent for K-8 education.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds, are any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of Resolution 2018 dash four dash 24 dash four to create the position of Assistant Superintendent for K-8 education.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds, are any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to hire Dr. Rick Walsh, Assistant Superintendent for K-8 at a salary of $130,000 with a start date to be determined by the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in seconds, are any discussion?
Yes. Yes, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Steve, but...
Sorry.
Yes, I, I'm not real comfortable voting on some of these items that have just kind of not had enough time to digest all the information. And although, uh, Dr. Walsh may be the best candidate, uh, seeing as I didn't have enough time to really scrutinize it or, or even heard his name, uh, I'm, I'm gonna have to, rather than abstain and be a wimp about it, I'll have to vote no, be, just for that reason, not because I don't think he might be the talented man. But I would like, if we're gonna be a Team of Ten, I wanna know more than an hour before a voting meeting what's happening. That's all.
Can, can I respond to that, Mr. Zirka?
Just my request would be that you try to attend more meetings, because that, that's a notice that your attendance has been down, so, um, in order to know what's going on, maybe you could attend more meetings.
Well, I will certainly try my very best.
But I'd also like to say, I agree with Rich. Going forward, if we're gonna be a Team of Ten, we need to have the information provided to us prior to, an hour before the meeting.
Do we wish to clarify when it was actually available to the board? I had it available to, it was available, um, earlier than an hour before the meeting. It was days...
When was it available?
It was on the, um, G, G drive, executive session.
On the Google Drive.
When?
I saw it three, four days ago.
Okay.
You need to check your mail and your drive more.
Got it.
Motion's on the table.
So any discussion, are there any discussion? All those in favor?
Steve, can I just say one more, one more thing? I just wanna say that, you know, in executive session, Dr. Highland and Dr. Yudmitsky gave us clear understanding of, I understand, of the process that they went through. And I appreciate that being clarified for us. So I recognize some of these limitations that existed, but, you know, I think that in light of the process that they went through, I feel very comfortable, um, being able to make this vote.
Plus, Dr. Walsh gave us a presentation himself, so did I throw a whole board?
He did, absolutely.
And I agree with Angela, so I'll be voting yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Question in a second, are any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
No.
You know, one of the things I think is important for people to recognize is that, uh, the caliber of the candidates that, um, the board just voted on tonight. So I'd like to read to you a little bit of the background of the person that will be joining our district and will be leading K-8 education. The Plum Borough School District is extremely proud to announce the appointment of a 1987 Plum High School graduate, Dr. Rick Walsh, as the Assistant Superintendent for K-8 Education. Dr. Walsh has over 25 years of experience working for children in public education. His experiences include leading the development and implementation of K-12 curriculum, strategic district-wide initiatives, safety planning, technology integration, and multi-tiered systems of support that focused on the whole child. During his tenure as an administrator in multiple school districts, he was able to significantly improve student achievement levels that resulted in external acknowledgements and validation at the local, state, and national levels. His accolades include the 2014 United States Department of Education National Blue Ribbon for exemplary high performance. His school is a 2018 finalist for the United States Department of Education Green Ribbon, and he also received the Pennsylvania Department of Education Keystone Excellence Award. Additionally, he was a finalist for the National Terrell H. Bell Award, given to those school leaders who have demonstrated extraordinary results in outstanding leadership. Prior to going into administration, Dr. Walsh served as a results-oriented elementary teacher and a highly successful volleyball coach in the Mount Lebanon School District. Dr. Walsh completed his doctorate from Indiana University of Pennsylvania, which included his superintendent letter of eligibility. He received his Bachelor of Science degree from Pennsylvania State University in kindergarten and elementary education. Subsequently, he completed his Masters of Education in Administration and Policy Studies from the University of Pittsburgh. With this degree, he gained a certification as a K-12 principal. He also served as an adjunct professor at Duquesne University in the College of Education, where he taught classes on middle-level education in the areas of English Language Arts with a focus on writing instruction. Dr. Walsh is looking forward to working and collaborating with all stakeholders in the Plum Borough School District, and to create an environment that fosters academic success and enables the whole child to reach their potential. Dr. Walsh has shared that returning to Plum after leading in other high-achieving school districts will be personally meaningfully meaningful, and will allow him to give back to the community that provided him with an excellent start in life. He stated this, "This community has given me so much in my life. Now it is my time to give back and serve the children of Plum. It is time to roll up our sleeves and tirelessly work, so they can receive an education that is second to none." So, um, with that, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Walsh and welcome him to Plum. First, I'd like to thank the school board, um, for your vote, and Dr. Highland. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, first, I was really impressed with the process. Um, it's not too often that a school district includes teachers, building principals, Director of Special Ed, along with central office administrators in the interview process. So for me, it was really nice to get a sense of the district by meeting some teachers and principals throughout the process. Um, as Dr. Highland mentioned, uh, I am a proud graduate of Plum Borough. Uh, it just feels right coming back home. Um, it seems to me every room I've walked in, like this evening, I've come across old friends and people that I remember from high school. Uh, I am looking forward to meeting the students, their families, working with teachers, building administrators, Dr. Yudmitsky. Um, I'm really looking forward us working closely together to make sure that all the boys and girls in this district, K-12, are career and college-ready. I just wanna thank everybody again. Um, and I'm really looking forward to the transition and rolling up my sleeves and getting started. So thank you.
Thank you. Recommend approval to hire Jim McClellan, Director of Facilities, at a salary of $80,000 with a start date to be determined by the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion in seconds, are, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to accept the Resolution 2018 dash four dash 24 dash two for furlough of professional employees.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to accept Resolution 2018 dash four dash 24 dash one for the authorization of official statement of charges against employee 1573 and placing on unpaid leave.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to accept Resolution number 2018 dash 24 dash one for charges and unpaid leave.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to accept the following retirements, uh, from one through eight, and resignations nine through 12 as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to hire the following employees, numbers one through four as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to hire the following list of summer activity sponsors, numbers one through six, at $14.63 per hour.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to hire the special service sponsors.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval to accept the special service volunteer sponsors, numbers one through two.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the adjusted maternity leave of Mara Smith, long-term English substitute teacher at Plum High School, to begin April 23rd, 2018, through the end of the 2017-18 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the maternity leave of Kelly Gibson, school psychologist, to begin on or about August 31st, 2018, through January 1st, 2019.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act for an intermittent leave for Jeffrey Weber, custodian at Plum High School, retroactive to April 17th, 2018, through April 17th, 2019.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the following unpaid leaves of employees, numbers one through six, as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Education Committee, Dr. Anderson, Chairperson, recommend approval to accept the grant donations of items one, numbers one through 35 as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the teacher's start and end times at Holiday Park Elementary and at O Block for the 2018-19 school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the voluntary informal disposition of student C as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is a motion in the second, uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the voluntary informal disposition of student D as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval of the following overnight field trip as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Safe Schools Committee, Mrs. Rossler, Chairperson, recommend approval of the contract with Bay Area Risk Alice Training Institute to conduct an all-hazard risk and safety assessment of the district's buildings at the price not to exceed $12,000.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I just wanna share that, um, the information will be public as long as it doesn't compromise safety. So, and we should have the report started sometime in the middle of May, the, the assessment. So, and the report back shortly after that. So, that's good news.
And thank you.
Dr. Highland, I think, I can't remember if it was you or Dr. Yudmitsky, we had discussed, it wasn't, um, there was no benefit to waiting. We can let them know that the buildings are gonna be configured differently, K-4, 5 to 6.
They do know that. They have the square footage of all the buildings, so they are ready to go, and I believe it's May 14th, uh, is the start for that.
Yeah, we had, I had a couple people ask me that question. It was a good point, but we're gonna let, we let them know that. Yep.
Looking forward to the, the data that we get back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, me too. No more discussion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Eastern Area Schools, Dr. Anderson, Representative?
Uh, the meeting is this Thursday, so no update.
Oh, my, I'm, I apologize.
Did you have a report, Angela, for education?
I didn't, nobody did.
Okay. I actually did.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
Becky, what's your report?
I, I actually did for safety. I just wanted to let the community know that, um, back in March, Dr. Highland and I had met with, um, the superintendent of the Gateway School District, which is Dr. Short, and also Patricia Crum, um, who, um, is the HR representative there. Um, and we discussed their model of safety at Gateway School District. Um, we also had a phone, um, conversation with, um, Brian White from the Butler School District, and he's the superintendent of that school district. So, um, we had two very good conversations with, um, two school districts that both provide their own safety in every school, um, for their students and their staff. So, um, I brought the information back to the board, and, um, we had agreed as a board to, um, direct administration to take the budget, which is $328,000, to see how we could create our own model of safety here in the Plum School District. Um, I will say, from speaking to, um, the superintendent, and also board members and community members at Gateway, um, in particular, they have all their eyes dotted and their t's crossed, and I will say that over and over again, because we spent two to three hours just speaking with the superintendent there on everything they did, they do from the training that they receive, and also, um, the training that they give to their, their, the faculty and the employees there at Gateway School District. So, it's something that was spearheaded by a board member at Gateway, um, Mary Beth Sarucci, which I also speak to about, you know, how they, um, implemented that program, and, um, looking forward to see, um, how that can come back with, in our budget. Um, I believe it will be under the budget. We're not spending money on safety, but I refuse to take money away from safety. So, um, that's all I have.
May I add one thing to Mrs. Rossler? Uh, Dr. Short was absolutely fantastic in the amount of time, uh, that he spent with us, and he took us around the buildings, he answered every question. He was fantastic. So, I just wanna thank one of my colleagues, my next-door colleague, and just say thank you to Mr. Short.
I totally agree, so.
Dr. Short, excuse me.
Dr. Short, yep. Thank you.
Yep.
So I have.
All right, thanks, Becky. Um, Facilities Committee, Mr. Coulson, Chairperson, recommend approval of Waste Management for Garbage Removal Services for a three-year term.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
So motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? And John, make sure you got that for Becky. All right.
Yeah, I did.
Recommend approval of Tijanovic Landscaping for Lawn Care and Sports Field Lawn Services for a three-year term.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make their recommendations.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, motion passes. Recommend approval for Monroeville Summer Food Truck Series to use Regency Park Parking Lot on the following dates, May 11th, June 8th, July Recommend approval for Monroeville Summer Food Truck Series to use Regency Park parking lot on the following dates, May 11th, June 8th, July 27th, August 24th, September 28th, and October 26th.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in seconds. Are there any discussion?
Just did we clarify the compensation and the wording on the advertising?
Yeah, we talked to them. They're going to take off this proceeds.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes.
Just a real quick report. Committee met last week. I was hoping Mr. Zaharchek could go over real brief on the, on why we picked those particular approvals today.
Sure thing. On the, in the case of the waste management, we had two bidders, and waste management was the lower price of the two to put in request or proposal. On top of that, we, they are our current vendors, so we feel comfortable with them. They know the operation, and they were the low, the low bidder. The same in the second case, the Janavic Landscaping, same situation. They were the current incumbent, and they also had the lower of the two proposals that we received. In that case, they made it easy for both of us, for all of us, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Finance Committee, Mr. Schlock, chairperson. Recommend approval of the Technology Pool Legal Counsel Agreement. On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in seconds. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the Adelfoy Contract. On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in seconds. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the First Steps Driving School Agreement. On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in seconds. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the Treasurers Report and bill payments for March 2018. On behalf of the committee, I will make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in seconds. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the April 2018 budget transfers. On behalf of the committee, I will make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of settlement agreement between student A and student B in the Plum Borough School District in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. On behalf of the committee, I will make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Just a real brief, quick report. We, the last, we had a budget workshop on April 16th last week, so we're continuing, you know, budget discussions as we move forward, and the next budget workshop is actually scheduled for May 8th, in the second, what, second week of March, or May. So, that's the next, the next workshop, and then, you know, we continue to have discussions, and as we move closer to, you know, passing a final preliminary budget in May, and obviously a final, final budget in June. So, budget discussions continue. So, that's, that's all I have.
Hey Steve?
Yeah?
We, I didn't get to do anything for education. I apologize.
Oh, yeah, go, go. Give you a report, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just know that there's a whole lot going on for kindergarten in the background, and we talked about it at the discussion meeting, but I wanted to make sure that Dr. Omitski, I can see John talking to her, that Dr. Omitski can give an update while the camera's on. Anybody that's not at the meeting would be able to hear it. Even though it's a review for us, I think it would be good for the community to hear.
Let this one steal your microphone.
We had, we sent a survey out to kindergarten parents last week so that we could ascertain parents' interest in either AM or PM kindergarten, in the hope that we could honor all of the parents' requests, and we have received close to two hundred, one hundred and sixty-seven people have responded. In addition to that, we have Mr. Nysley put together a list. He reached out to all organizations in Plum that provide some kind of programming, before-after-school programming for children, and put together a very thorough list of what those services look like. We've reached out, he also reached out to the YMCA, and we have reached out to another organization, Keystone Consulting, to gauge their interest in whether or not they would be interested in offering some kind of programming, and they have expressed a significant interest, but they haven't committed yet. We will be sending the childcare list out to all parents tomorrow. On May 1st is kindergarten orientation. We have also finalized our attendance zones for next year. As soon as we can upload the files and get the information about which students go where, we will notify every single parent as to where their child will attend next year. Hopefully, it'll be in the next couple weeks.
And they can look for that in what, letter?
Yes, they will get a hard copy of a letter, and then there's also a, a link on our website to updated information on the elementary redistricting and reconfiguration, and we try to upload as many resources and information to that site as well, so we'll try to keep that as current as possible.
And you also are having the transition meetings.
There are transition meetings for all the levels that have begun.
Okay, yep. Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
That's all right. There's no business to attend to for food service, so next up is athletics. Ms. Caldwell, chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Schlock. Just a brief update on spring sports. We've had a lot of challenges with the weather. The first few weeks, we had more cancellations than games actually were able to be played or events. And thus far, we have all winning teams. Baseball was seven and three, softball, six and four, girls lacrosse is four and three, and girls track is four and two. That was as of yesterday. So, we thank the coaches and the students and the families for their hard efforts and understanding and patience with the weather and rescheduling, and you can keep posted with that on the district website through athletics for schedule changes and updates. So, thanks for your patience on that. That's it, Mr. Schlock. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Forbes Road, no action, so next, Intergovernmental Committee, Mrs. Rossler, chairperson.
We didn't meet. Our next meeting is May 14th.
Okay, that's a Monday, right? Yeah. All right, next Legislative Policy Council, Mrs. Caldwell, chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Schlock. Just two pieces of legislation to very briefly report on myself, as, as well as Dr. Hyland had noted, House Bill 2150, and, and both of these, which I refer to, address school safety, and it's on the minds of our state legislatures in a, in a much more significant matter with the events throughout the country as of this year. So, House Bill 2150 would allow for targeted grants, and those targeted grants will be allocated through a competitive grant review process to school entities, and those school entities would be able to apply on an annual basis for that targeted grant. So, that is House Bill 2150, and then in the Senate, and that is sponsored by, I see Representative Dermody as one of our local, more local representatives on that one. For the Senate, Senator Kim Ward sponsored on March 29th, co-sponsored Senate Bill 1078, and that would address the ability of school boards to discuss certain school matters and security plans in executive session, just to further promote the safety and well-being of our students. So, if anyone is interested and you would care to contact your state representatives and state senators, especially when it comes to funding for school safety, please feel free to reach out to your local offices and advocate for legislation and funding that could come back from the state to the school districts for safety. Any, any efforts that we can do on that with citizens speaking up greatly help, and, and we as board members work, work with them as well as advocate for our students, so appreciate any efforts on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Schlock.
Policy Committee, Mr. Wizniewski, chairperson. Recommend, recommend approval of the following policies, numbers one through nine as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second?
So motion in seconds. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Brian, you got a report?
Yeah, just real quick, thank Dr. Brewer again. I think we're working on the 2008 update, state-driven, so, you know, I continue to do a great job there. Thank you. And just going forward is, you know, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to consider allowing the superintendent to work with the solicitor to possibly look at updating policy to reshape our committees, to see if we can condense, giving up four Tuesdays a month, you know, if we can somehow get that down, or, you know, just see if they can work together to come up with a, a better plan of attack for us with respect to committees, so. You know, if I need to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to allow them to work together on that to bring something to us as a board.
I don't think there's any action.
Yeah, I don't think there's any action, but.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
As long as the boards, you guys are all good with that. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Brian.
We'll get on that.
Transportation Committee, Mr. Zuko, chairperson. Recommend, recommend approval of Marmac Tire Company for bus tires for the 2018-19 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
So motion in seconds. Are there any discussion?
I'll make the slight discussion that these are for the purchase of new and retread tires, and I'd like to thank Scott Mergon for doing such a good job keeping track of that, that, I, I know we use a lot of tires, but two, two years ago, we switched companies because we were having a bad problem with some of the life expectancy on one of the retread companies, so we switched, and I'm pretty happy with what we have right now, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Any, anything else in your report, Rich, or?
No, that, that.
Okay, that was it. All right. All right, next, is there any citizens' comments on non-agend items?
Hello, good evening. Amy Wetmore, 834 Unity Center Road. Tonight, I would like to address a statement I've made previously regarding the need for this board to raise taxes to the index to aid in balancing the budget. Recently, we heard from some individuals in the community who lived on a fixed income, which Ms. Riggins, who I don't see tonight. Thank you. As Stuteley pointed out, most of us do. Asking, these community members asked the board to not raise taxes at all, a campaign promise many of you ran on, and a campaign promise that makes little sense as public school districts rely on property taxes as their largest source of revenue. And to think that you can run a school district on the same funds you did a decade ago shows little forethought in financial planning. Plum is a prime example. Consider that our millage rates were unchanged from 2004 to 2015, despite the warnings Peasars were going to be a burden down the line, despite normal increases in everyday expenses, a concept most of us are familiar with, cost of living expenses for which business and industry provide cost of living raises. Yet, the district didn't give themselves an increase of that nature for ten years. The facts can't be argued. Our current millage is twenty point two four three. For all districts in Allegheny County, we ranked twenty-sixth out of forty-five, placing us below the mean for rates in the county. Property taxes have only been raised two times in the last twelve years, with no increases happening for that entire decade. I'm not here to say taxes should be raised every year. Now, my concern this evening is in sharing a burden. We have been told for the last several years, our financial situation borders on dire, and we need to make difficult moves now to improve the future of this district. Mr. Zaharchek has emphasized that our real issue is in generating revenue, not in spending. Yet, poor decision-making and failure to generate necessary revenue have left us with no choice but to reduce staff and change, if not ultimately eliminate, programming. Parents have stood where I stand time and again, sharing their stories, asking you to realize the impact these changes would have on their children and their lives. And they have accepted the final decision to move to half-day kindergarten and reconfigure the district, your decision. Are they happy? Not by a stretch. Are they inconvenienced? Is an unexpected search for daycare they didn't think they'd need an inconvenience? What if there are two hundred other families looking for the same and not enough space in the immediate community? Is explaining to your child that they will be leaving their current school and heading somewhere new for sixth grade an inconvenience? Most will transition fine. Children are resilient. But what about those with special needs who've built strong relationships with not just the teachers, but the staff and the volunteers in their home school? Of course, it's inconvenient, yet parents have accepted these changes and are doing their best to make it work for them and their families. Now, those of us without these inconveniences need to step up and do our part to weather the storm. Mr. Zaharchek referred to a three-year plan in which this year, year two, would hit the district the hardest. This plan included raising taxes to the index for all three years to get the district out of the red. It is unfair to place the burden of financial mismanagement squarely on the, squarely on the shoulders of our children and their families, and not ask for help from the community as a whole. If you don't follow the plan laid out by Mr. Zaharchek, our local financial expert, you are sending a clear message to the constituents of this borough. You care more about a vote than you do for the children you were elected to protect. Recently, Ms. Caldwell referred to herself as a steward of taxpayer money. A steward is someone who works to lead the organization in a better place than it was when first entrusted to their care. A true steward would see their obligation not only to the taxpayers, but to the students of this community, and do what is necessary to provide them the best education possible. I leave you with the words of Benjamin Franklin, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest."
I'm glad you're here. I'm going to answer some of the questions. It'll be helpful. Michelle Stepnick, 3020 Settlers Court, Murraysville. It's an email I sent to Dr. Hyland and Mr. Zaharchek. Thank you, Mr. Zaharchek, for answering me back. Dr. Hyland, maybe you didn't receive the email. I said last night, I sent it last Tuesday, you showed a slide that could be a new program for seniors. I have a couple of questions that I'm hoping you can answer. Where did the sixty-five-plus number come from? How does the district, how do we know how many households there are that are twenty-five thousand dollars or less, and what is that breakdown? And I'd like to also include, does that also include, are you looking at social security money as income? How much will this cost from the funds that we desperately need, and how much of this cost from the fund, how much will it cost us? Is there a theory behind this, that people that do not have kids in the district, so maybe they're families in poverty, or is it just seniors that don't have kids in the district because we have families that are in poverty as well? So, if you're working about a sort of, sort of incentive program, I would ask that you look to those families as well, because my family, I'm happy to pay the tax increase. Tax me. I want my kid to have his programs. So, my questions are, are we talking and thinking about if you're of retirement age and you have children in the district, are you discriminated against because maybe you don't pay that tax increase, or does that not matter? And can those people that are living in poverty with children in the district, maybe making twenty-five thousand or less, do those people get discriminated against? Those are questions I have. And again, Dr. Hyland, you and I might not agree on a whole lot of things, but we were told that this man was going to come and save the school district. Mr. Zaharchek, these are our experts. They're going to tell us what we need to do. They told you, raise the taxes.
Any additional comments?
Good evening. My name's Leigh Anne Weiss. I live at 425 Vale Avenue. I just wanted to bring up an important point about what's happening between now and the beginning of next school year in terms of transitioning our students. As Ms. Wetmore so eloquently stated, the parents and the students are going to have to make a lot of changes for this coming year, and so I'd like to ask for the board and the administration to do everything within your power to make this transition as smooth as possible. I know with the closing of Regency Park, we're already seeing the negative impacts of how that's going to affect the children. A lot of students are now aware of what's happening, and they're very upset about, you know, losing certain programs, and, you know, am I going to have STEM, STEAM Club next year? Am I going, are we going to be able to have our Regency Growers company, or our technology program? program? Um, so, it, it's something that's already causing a stir in the schools, you know, if you put your ear to the ground, you're going to hear a lot of teachers that are upset, a lot of students that are upset, and, um, I'm really concerned about staff morale with the passing of these furloughs. Um, I know, as someone who used to work for Gateway School District when they went through a process of cutting a lot of positions, you know, what that did to the staff morale. And so, I really want to ask you to, to do your best in being as, um, you know, careful about those decisions as possible. Um, you know, in, in my humble opinion, you know, cutting staff should always be the very, very last resort. So, raise the damn taxes to the index and do everything you can to ensure that our kids are getting the best education possible, because they are what we should be investing in, in Plum Borough. And I don't care if 20% of the seniors in this community who don't have kids are in your ear telling you, uh, you know, that that's not the move to make. You need to do what's best for the kids, and that's investing in their education. Thank you.
All right, um, the May meeting schedule, uh, May 8th is the budget workshop, 6:00 PM.